We'll call to order here, and the first thing will be approving the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Speaker Jeff?
Second.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Charlie. Laney, is anything else on there that we needed?
Mr. Chair, there were two changes to the agenda under land and resources items. You can remove number two preliminary plat of Miltonau cabins addition, and authorization to purchase a transit passenger van was added. We're starting with resolution twenty-five dash fifty-two today.
All right, thank you. Call the question.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we need to approve the draft minutes of the June third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June third meeting.
Thank you, Shane.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Troy.
I sit back there so I can get some steps in on my step counter. I just have one item today. It's a donation to be designated to the K-9 unit. We do have the name of the person, but for today's purposes, they'd like to remain anonymous. The amount of the donation is five thousand dollars. And so I'd like to ask the board to accept that donation for the K-9 unit.
That's great, that's great. Is there a resolution number to start with here?
Twenty-five dash fifty-two.
Twenty-five, okay, there it is. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five fifty-two, donation to K-9 unit.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
There you go. Thanks. Okay, Lee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Board? Good afternoon, yes.
I bring before you kind of the last leg of our journey on our reorganization for the Coordinator's Office. And as you're familiar with, we had two positions revalued due to some responsibilities being shifted around and those existing employees being able to kind of step up to some greater responsibilities, which is much appreciated. So I've got the one position titled Human Resource and Risk Manager, slot number five zero one four. It's going to replace our current Human Resource and Risk Management Strategic Business Partner job. The other job is, the new title will be Administrative and Benefits Coordinator, slot number five zero one five. And this is designed to replace the existing position of Human Resources and Central Services Assistant job. And then lastly, with these moves, there still remains a pool of work that would be more of a design best for an office support person. And so asking the board at the same time to approve adding this position as Office Support Specialist, which as you may know is used in other departments as well. So it's a pretty routine position that we don't need to have graded and can make it, put it in place so their value, being able to do some valued work with our department and run the front desk, run the phones, handle a lot of the miscellaneous office tasks that are always there. So the action I'm requesting is, number one, to approve the Resources and Risk Manager position, slot number five zero one four. That came in at a grade eleven. And that will replace the current position that that person's in called the Risk Management Strategic Business Partner, which is a grade ten. The second change is to put in place the Administrative and Benefits Coordinator, slot number five zero one five, which came out as a grade seven from DDA. And this will be replacing the Resources and Human Resources and Central Services Assistant, grade five, slot five zero zero three. And the third item on my ask is to add the position of Office Support Specialist, which is a grade four position and slot number five zero one six. Questions?
All righty. Board's questions?
Mr. Chair, Lee, and I see on the other comments where you're down to where your staffing level should only have to be seven instead of the nine that have been budgeted is?
Yeah, looking at our staffing levels, you know, right now we're sitting at six. We've been as high as nine.
Yep.
I think where this will all end is we still have a payroll position we haven't filled. And that's part of our succession with our current payroll administrator eventually retiring. And so we will probably, for a while, which was Heather's plan too, is to add a third position while they're in training. So for a while, we might be up to eight again.
Okay.
But I don't see us needing nine positions as we did before. That's based on talking to the current staff and current workload and things could change, but that's...
During enrollment time for everything?
We believe so.
Okay. Well, that's great. Excellent.
Mr. Chair, I got a question on that. So you'd hire somebody for training in early, right? Is what you're looking at when this person retires to prepare him?
Yes.
So then when this person retires, you would go back down to seven?
Yeah, we, so specifically speaking about the payroll position or department or unit, right now we have the payroll administrator and we have a payroll tech. What we would do is add a payroll tech now, or in September possibly, and the current payroll tech would move to a payroll supervisor.
Okay.
And get that newest person acclimated while they're still learning from the payroll administrator. And then once payroll administrator to the current person retires, we would end up with a payroll administrator and a payroll tech again. So that supervisor position, not to get heavy on management here, but it was, it was a way to allow transition into that payroll administrator position by getting them into a position so they get some experience supervising payroll staff and get the knowledge from the current payroll administrator. And then when she retires, we're back to two there. So that would be back to seven, I think I said.
Yep, that's what you had said, seven. So it'd just be eight for probably a couple of months or so?
Well, it might be longer than that.
Okay.
And all realistic, we can't control when someone exactly pulls the trigger on when to retire. But I think that would be in the next several, few years, three to five years possibly. But, you know, payroll's a pretty complicated matter, and we got to make sure that that person who's next in line can literally pick it up and run with it. And I, it's not going to happen in a year or two years sometimes, depending, you know, you got interactions with the IRS, you got taxes, they interact with finance, and then some of the other payroll rules and regulations under Department of Minnesota Department of Labor. And then you've got all the benefit side and so on with payroll and whatnot. So yeah, it's just a, it's a lot to learn. We want to make sure we're, that employees won't experience any hiccups when that transition does happen.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a permanent position that we would keep. So when that person is trained in and this other person retires, we drop back to seven.
That's completely my intention, yes. And I haven't heard any other ways why that wouldn't work.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I got a question. Lee, when do you plan on posting that position or have you already?
For the payroll tech? Probably closer to September, maybe in late July, early August.
Okay, then we'd have them for two to three years possibly.
Yes.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, any other question? Otherwise, we need a motion?
I'd make the motion to go along with the changes recommended by the Coordinator on job classifications.
Yep, thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Tim, thanks. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Tim?
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Just a couple of items for you guys today, fairly straightforward. First one that I have is to approve an engineering contract to do our bridge safety inspections. This is something, we've had MSA do this the last couple of years. It is a federal requirement that they have to go out and some of our structures are on a twelve-month frequency, some are on a twenty-four, some are on a forty-eight. So this is kind of standard, kind of set and ready to go because of what the dollar amount is. That's why we're bringing this to the board.
Okay, I just got a question. I mean, these are strictly for county highways, nothing to do with township?
No, this will actually include the structures that are on the township as well. So there are sixty-one structures in Douglas County. Some of them might be on the county system, some might be on a township system.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question. Do they reimburse us for that or we cover that?
We cover them.
Is this the same price as it was last year or how much?
It's actually a little bit higher, and it's because last year I think we had twenty-three bridges on the inspection list. This year we're doing twenty-eight because that includes the initial inspection on two new culverts that'll end up being on County fourteen.
Oh, I see there's twenty-six on this paper. You added two more?
There are two new structures that'll go on County Road fourteen when we do the culvert. So it's the initial inspection on those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for Tim?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the bridge inspection contract.
Thank you, Shane.
I'd second.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? Laney, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item that I have is to approve sending an RFP for an intersection design on Cassa Forty-Six and Pioneer. So the reason I have this coming to you guys, this is not currently in my five-year plan, but it's something that I'm looking to add into my five-year plan. And this would be for designing a roundabout at County Forty-Six and Pioneer. It's in our sales tax. So it's in with that, with that set of projects. It's just not currently in the five-year plan. So if approved, what I would like to do is send out an RFP so we can get our design work done. When I have proposals back from consulting engineers, I'd be bringing that back to you guys for awarding that as well. We would have them have design work done by next summer so that we can get utilities notified and get them set to move. And I would like to build that roundabout in twenty twenty-seven. So when you see my next five-year plan, so either in December or January, this project will be on that. But because it's not currently in my five-year plan, and in order to keep everything kind of on the transparency side of things, making sure that you guys know what I'm up to, that's why I'm looking for an approval.
Mr. Chair, have you guys done an estimate on what you figure approximate cost would be or not?
Construction cost or for design cost?
Design cost.
Yes, I publicly don't want to give that because then magically that's what their contract comes in at. But I will absolutely email the five of you and let you know what that number is.
But you do have a number?
I do.
Okay.
And I assume this would be fifty-fifty with the city?
This would not be. This would be ours because this is within the, in the sales tax. So the sales tax was figured to have the entire construction cost and design cost covered. So I guess my answer back to that is the city residents are paying our sales tax. So the city kind of is paying that. This isn't county funds, this is the sales tax. So this is coming from both county residents and city and outside the county as well.
The Pioneer Road is a city street.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, Forty-Six is a county road. It's the intersection. We split the costs in the semi for.
Yeah, I see that, to me, they should have some skin in the game there, but... Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the RFP.
All righty. Thank you, Shane.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else? Laney, please.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yep.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll report back when I have that.
There you go.
The RFP will be very interesting for me to look at.
Thank you.
Come on up, Dave.
They're not too generous with us, but they sure like to help us spend our money.
Good morning, afternoon, apologies. A few items for your consideration. The first are some excavator landscaper licenses. We have three for your consideration. We recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve excavator landscaper licenses.
I second.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I'm not sure how your packet is reading, but the preliminary plat of Miltonau cabins addition was withdrawn by the applicant. So we would move on to the preliminary plat of Sahara Beach, first edition. It's a two-lot plat, night of township. Lots would be meeting our minimum size requirements, connecting the central sewer and accessing an existing township road. Planning Commission recommended approval as presented.
Okay, I guess I'd have one comment, Dave, and that would be, are these going to be independent sewers here or are they going to be hooked up to city sewer?
They are be connected to ALSD.
Well, I would make the same recommendation that they have to have either onsite discharge for their water softener or a total free water softener regeneration. I mean, I'm serious. If we keep doing this and letting that water go out to our ALSD, we are not helping matters at all. So that'd be my comment on that.
Are you making a motion then?
Well, I'll make that motion. I'll say that if this proceeds, it will have to take care of the softener water discharge that it does not go to the ALSD.
And we have a condition that we've used previously on a plat. So if that's the condition you'd like to see, I can place that in there if there's a second.
That would be fine.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Shane. Anything else on that? Laney, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. And the next item is a preliminary plat of Carlson Acres. This is a six-lot plat, excuse me. It's a nine-lot plat in Le Grand Township. This is just south of the city of Garfield there. Planning Commission reviewed that and recommended that it be approved with the one condition that they keep the outlot with the remnant parcel.
There again, is that onsite sewer systems there?
Correct. Those would all be individual septic treatment systems. There's no central sewer available in that area.
Okay, that's no problem then. Board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve preliminary plat Carlson Acres as presented.
Thank you, Tim.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So our next item is a conditional use permit. This is amending an existing CUP for Powers Manufacturing out in Carless Township. They're seeking to add some outdoor, or I'm sorry, some enclosed cold storage. Their existing conditional use permit requires that they amend the permit if the business were to expand. So Planning Commission reviewed this and recommended approval with the two conditions.
Board's wishes?
Question, Mr. Chair, is this just for lighting?
Mr. Chair, no, it's, they're seeking to add a cold storage building on to, to expand an existing cold storage building. I think it's in your packet there. It shows where the sixty by eighty would be added on to the existing, I believe it's probably sixty by eighty. The condition is just something that we've been putting on businesses that are in and around residential areas just to try to make sure that we're not causing light to be a nuisance in the night and evening.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit for S and P Land Management.
Thank you, Shane.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So my last item for you is, I believe I've either spoken with you formally or informally as individuals, the Planning Commission is interested in acquiring a vehicle that is easier to access. The current vehicle that we use is a Ford Expedition, which in order to get into the third row seating, you have to tip up the second row seating and bend over and climb back in there. And most of the members of our Planning Commission are over age fifty-five, ranging up to almost eighty. So to climb in and out of that Expedition gets to be a bit of a challenge, especially when we're making, you know, six to eight stops. So with that, I've looked around there. Probably the best option for us is a Ford Transit Van, passenger van. The particular one that I included in your packet is an example. It's got seating for ten to possibly twelve, but we typically have seven or eight folks along. If the county were to purchase this vehicle, it would not only be useful to our office, but I imagine it would be useful to other departments. I can think of the board often, what is it, once or twice a year, you do a road review. It'd be a great vehicle to put the board in and drive around and do your road review and other offices that might be attending a meeting or a group of them. So as you can see from my request, I believe we have some funds that were carried over from a previous year. And I would like to use those funds to purchase just such a vehicle, so.
Yeah, it looks very clean. Is there any kind of a warranty goes with this at all?
Well, the two that I happened to find that are available, no, there is no warranty. They're both at about a hundred thousand miles. My understanding is is that these vehicles are often used by a fleet somewhere. And when they hit a hundred thousand miles, they turn them over and put them on auction. There's obviously larger ones. We don't need anything larger. And given the amount that we would use it, maybe twice a month, maybe three times a month, I would expect that a vehicle with a hundred thousand miles on it, we'd probably be able to keep it for the next ten years, so.
Mr. Chair, I was going to make a comment. On this particular van, can a person take the seats out then if you want to use it for a cargo van?
Yeah, if you, you can see in there, they're sitting on tracks and it's possible to remove them, change the configuration of them. So yeah, if we needed to yank them all out and use it as a cargo vehicle, we could sure do that or remove the configuration and change it around. It's flexible.
So that's another place that could use it.
Well, and we have a nice facility now where we can pull that vehicle in and remove the chairs and store them safely.
Absolutely.
So it certainly adds some convenience to that.
And just asking too, I mean, if, if needed be, the veterans could use this? If there's some hitching to get along with them?
You know, I've always had the philosophy that the vehicles that our department has should be available to any department. And we've tried to make our Expedition available. The Sheriff's Office uses it regularly as well as other departments. So I don't see any reason why this wouldn't be the same. Like I said, we'd probably use it twice a month. If other departments can get use out of it when we're not using it, then, you know, that's money well spent.
Great. There you go.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to give Mr. Rush authorization to purchase transit passenger van not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Thank you, Charlie.
I will second that.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, he already did it, huh?
He, he, he will be pleased that he doesn't...
Didn't he have his surgery yesterday?
Yes.
Yesterday?
I haven't talked to him.
I just want to, just a brief informational thing too. If you recall, the preliminary plat of Chainview Estates, which was a fifty-lot plat in Carless Township off of County Road eleven, we had a requirement that they needed to complete a groundwater study that I would review. Just for the board's information, I received that several weeks ago and had an opportunity to review that. It was my determination, based on the information they provided, that they would not need a community water supply, that there's adequate groundwater in that area, that they can each have an individual well as long as it's completed in what's referred to as Aquifer One, which is a large aquifer in our area that has hydraulic connectivity to Lake Darling and Carless and gets recharged up in that area. So I do have a letter for the chair, which I forgot to bring with me, but I will make sure you get a copy of it. So that project is likely to proceed now.
Okay, how about to comply with that saltwater discharge?
Unless they do something different, that was a requirement that we had on that plat.
All right.
So.
But Dave, did, did you get an input adept to that aquifer?
Yeah, the aquifer is, and again, it depends on the, you know, the ground elevation, obviously. And then the aquifer layer itself is not completely uniform, but it's approximately ninety to a hundred and twenty-five feet below ground surface.
Okay.
It's, it's fairly thick and has excellent transmissivity, meaning the water is moving through there and they can, they can pump a lot of water out of there if they want to. I believe the Gathered Oaks, which is nearby, is, has an irrigation well that they use for fire suppression that they can pump eight hundred gallons a minute out of there.
Okay.
So there's, there's adequate supply that they're not going to cause any sort of impact on adjacent wells, existing wells that are out there.
Well, that's what I was wondering because the adjacent wells are probably shallower. It's hard to say.
If, the information that we were provided, there's a number of wells that were drilled in the last twenty years that are in that aquifer, but there may be other wells that, you know, predate that that are in, you know, maybe they're shallow in a sand lens or something, or they're sand points. If these are screened at that hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet, then they won't impact those shallow wells.
Okay.
Yeah, my first house was bordering this development, and I had a sixty-eight-foot well, but I had the hardest water you ever seen in your life. It was tough water. So they will need salt to fix that. Okay.
Nothing else?
Nope.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Becky.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've got one item for you. This is Beaver Classic is seeking a permit to conduct lawful gambling activity in the form of a raffle at the Arrowhead Resort and Conference Center on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-six. This would need to be in the form of a resolution.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five fifty-three for a gambling permit for Beaver Classic.
Thank you, Shane.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
That's it? All right, thanks. Jill, you are up next. That's it? All right, thanks. Jill, you are up next.
Good afternoon. I just have one item today. Just looking for a motion to approve bills totaling $3,377,196.47.
Motion to pay the bills.
There you go. All right, Tim got it first. Charlie got second. Lanay, please.
Meyer?
Yep.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Wei?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. We are at items from the floor. Anybody? Celeste, what you got? Nothing? All right, all right. Well, we need to adjourn. Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shane. Lanay, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Wei?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.